Talk to you. Now, call me in order.
I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the great land of the great.
So announcements, first is to announce a public hearing to consider amending the zoning code to permit the assembly of recycled fabrics into new products in the use in the Business B District on Monday, April 4th, 2016, at 7:00 PM in the Village Hall. I just want to give a two-second one on this thing. It's pretty much almost all contained in the description.
Right, yeah, this was a request made by the Ourspring Street Properties, where the Fisher businesses, and they want to start a business where they make clothes and other products out of recycled fabric. And it's not, it's in the Business District, that very esoteric use is not included in the Business District. There's an assembly of products, you know, but only, I think, there's only 20% of the floor, and you're selling the stuff online. Anyway, it didn't cover that. It seems like a use that makes a lot of sense, both for their practice and for their business and for the village, and so this zoning amendment would allow that. And barely over 20,000 square feet.
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for Monday, April 4th, at 7:00 PM. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing number two, on Monday, April 4th, 2016, at 7:00 PM, Village Hall, to consider the 2016-17 operating budget. We announced the intended budget, was that on Friday?
Yep.
Here, nice copy here. We're going to talk about adopting it. This is when people can call and weigh in on the budget, any part and all, discuss any of it. Having not gotten a lot of feedback, the overall tax increase is 1.42%. We were, once again, in compliance with the state tax cap, and services remain about the same, so I guess that's why we haven't had a lot of input on the budget so far. But if there is input, we're going to have the public hearing on Monday, April 4th. So I will make a motion for the public hearing. Can I have a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then checks over $125,000. We actually had three of them for our policy. We announced them. One was for Buchi Construction, which is accumulation of payments for various DPW projects, curving catch basins, where a whole bunch of things, jetting things out, but that totaled $112,550. That was kind of combination with operating budget and capital budget items. The second one was Lumen Light Solutions, LED street light replacement, which came out of the capital budget for $164,070. And then Hitachi for the microgrid design consulting, which actually is going to be reimbursed through a grant, for $40,000, which I've signed all those, and now everyone's alerted. Any others? Have any announcements?
Yeah, sure.
Sure. I don't know if anyone saw, or I'm just calling your attention to this week's enterprise in the editorial. They were talking about the issues with public safety for particularly pedestrians and the incidents recently in Dobbs Ferry and Hastings, as well as some of the incidents last year near the high school in Irvington, and they called out the slowdown Irvington initiative as being useful, worthwhile, and good to emulate, and was hoping that we might somehow work together to form a tri-village-wide approach to pedestrian safety. So I thought that was interesting. We've already heard from some folks from the Dobbs Ferry, I think there's a nation committee forming over there, and they want to talk to us. I don't know what it all means, because, you know, don't we own rip?
Yeah, rip and weep.
Exactly. Maybe Tarot tablet will steal it like they did Sonny Simon's, but...
They could have a logo of a little ferry boat, you know, or something else, but not our logo.
Yes.
That's ours. That's Mark's.
Something like that, handsomely for it.
The other thing I was going to mention was just that everyone by now in the village has probably received a water bill with this insert in it, which is an insert about specifically about how to save money this summer when, on irrigation systems, such many people have irrigation. And it turns out that during the summer months, water usage in the village just about doubles because of irrigation. So it'd be really worthwhile for you guys, everyone out there, before you blow your systems and get them cleaned out, to turn them on, talk to your landscaper, or your property manager, or whoever is responsible, and talk to them about some of these ideas. I mean, there's 15 of them here that you can undertake. Some of them are longer-term, some of them are kind of like Department of the Obvious, but it turns out that a lot of people don't really think about the irrigation. And when you're coming in with several thousand dollars or more in water bills during the summertime, as a surprise, it might be worth taking some actions ahead of time, which is why we sent it out in the freezing months of January, February, March, so that you'd get them in time to talk to your landscaper or whoever it was. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. I didn't get mine yet.
Oh, you can have this one.
But I'm just wondering if there's one little third of the village that they get this, huh?
Was it February, March, and April, or January, February, March? I thought it was February, March, and April, in which case, you're next.
Okay.
You can have two.
I don't think you should take more than one.
I don't think you have irrigation though, do you?
Did you get one of these yet?
I did.
Oh, okay. Did you get one?
And there's also a place on the village website called Waterwise. So if you go to IrvingtonNY.gov/Waterwise, there's information about irrigation, there's information about saving water around the home, and I think it's useful. That's my preach for the night.
Save money and water.
That's right.
Any other announcements, anyone? So I'll move on to correspondence. First is from Claire Cornish. While meeting last week, I'm regarding, I'm writing in regard to the plan by Brightview. As my husband, Mark, said, we have lived at East Houghton North Broadway for the past 16 years. I am intimately familiar with the traffic patterns of North Broadway in the vicinity of the proposed development. As I mentioned last night, there's a large spike in traffic around school dropout times in the morning, with traffic frequently at a standstill north from High School Hill as far as the proposed development. This lasts around 7:30 to 8:45. Traffic is not as heavy at the end of the school day, as more children seem to walk or take the bus. Second significant wave of heavy traffic rush hour with cars heading towards I-287. Frequently, these traffic jams extend all the way from freeway entrance south beyond our house toward Main Street. This wave of traffic can begin around 4:15 and extend beyond 6:00 PM. Traffic's definitely come worse during our years here, and I don't believe it can be attributed to the bridge construction. I believe the sheer size of the proposed development, with the corresponding number of staff arrivals, departures, visitors, deliveries of food, supplies, laundry, et cetera, undoubtedly have a significant effect on local traffic, and this will be in the detriment of the village residents and current commuters who have no other option. Let's see. Mark participated in the transportation campaign for almost two years and reviewed a great deal of traffic and safety data. The state was eventually persuaded to reduce the speed limit on Broadway by five miles to 35 miles per hour. On another note, I see you asked your question on long-term viability of this type of facility proposed by Brightview. It seems that these larger elder care facilities are in the investment of the moment, they're springing up everywhere. The future definitely seems to lie with enabling the elderly remaining in their homes with medical and social support services from the smaller, more community-oriented facilities. I hope that by the time I'm in need for elder care, I'll not be effectively warehoused with 100 other-plus oxygenarians, but be able to live in support among people of all ages. There are already 30 largest dis-situated facilities within 17-mile radius of Irvington. Given obligation to increase the diversity of our community both ethnically and socio-economically, the cost of living at Brightview will be in the region of $7,000. In my view, this would only make an option for only the wealthiest among us. I'm not opposed to senior living facility at the site per se, and I certainly don't feel Irvington is in need of six more oversized private homes. The site would provide a wonderful opportunity for some innovative development along the lines of my second home in Mount Kisco in Yonkers, a program which provides both medical services and daycare for seniors. Certainly, much-needed affordable housing could be built. Although Brightview has scaled back, their plan remains way too large, and scale is out of character for the village and does not, I believe, have the interest of current and future urban residents at heart. Yours, Claire Cornish. Obviously, I shortened some of it, but you can read it all in the back if you like. Next is from Kristen Wall. Dear Mayor, Mr. Trustees, there are three reasons why I think you should pass the entire water rate increase of 5% on the residents now. She talks about how we have a deficit, it's a usage fee, so you should pay as you go, and residents should pay full price, and they see how expensive it really is, they might encourage conservation. There's a couple of other paragraphs, but I'll just quickly say that our 3% increase in water rates actually covers that increase. There's only one input, so it's not like we're having 2% shortfall, we're actually having a surplus with our 3% tax increase, so we'll continue to pay down the deficit that built up over about 20 years. There's also, she had a question about the testing of the Irvington water for safety. I'm going to actually be sending out an email that kind of details it. To me, it was slightly confusing as well. I get the reports, especially the annual report that everybody gets, but to me, I didn't understand the process, and in light of both Flint, Michigan, and then Governor Cuomo talking about the leaching from Indian Point, I figured it was kind of timely, it was probably timely about a month ago, but I was kind of, wanted to make sure I really understood it, so I planned it out next week or so. But we don't test it just in the site, there's many sites. We're actually under, it's actually New York State and California, as Jim mentioned, are the two states that are held up to the highest standards and emulated in most places that take their water quality seriously. So we have New York State and Westchester County regulations that we follow up, and that's how the plan is set up. So I'll probably too much detailed letter in the next week or so.
And then I think Jim's discussion at our last work session, Jim Ingoesby, if people wanted to watch his discussion.
Yeah, I thought it was actually pretty good.
Yeah, I did too. He's incredibly knowledgeable, and he's our superintendent.
A former colleague was confused that we only tested it in one house or something, so that's not the case. But again, more and more details to follow. Next is from Padwee Lane, the residents thereof.
And they're here.
And they're here.
Yeah.
At least she two. I'll go ahead and read it, because I think it's pretty, I think it stands on its own. Is that good, or would you rather read it? It's up to you.
A pleasure.
In the organizational regular meeting of the Mayor and Board of Trustees of the Village of Irvington, New York, held on Monday, December 22nd, 2015, at 7:00 PM, it was recorded that Mayor Smith reviewed correspondence concerning the original correspondence to petition the Village Board to accept our roadway, unofficially known as Padwee Lane, as a public roadway. Furthermore, it was recorded that the Village will research whether there's ever an agreement of a dedication upon completion. In further, our road, unofficially known as Padwee Lane, to the Village of Irvington as a roadway, a public roadway, like we stated in our original communication dated November 18th, 2015, please find enclosed and tasked the minutes of the regular meeting of the planning board of the Village of Irvington, held in the trustees' room on December 3rd, 1986, at 8:00 PM. According to his minutes, David Geis, then Acting Secretary of the Irvington Planning Board, specifically acknowledged that the intention of the Padwee roadway dedication by the Village, we look forward to hearing back from you on this matter, and I bet we'll answer any questions of the person that we prefer. Then assigned respectfully Karen Eckert Greenberg, Taj Greenbarg, Ron Cherry, and Kerry Milstein, and Linda Forstmann. We were aware of the planning board minutes, because I think you actually pointed them out also. We actually were looking, the planning board actually doesn't have the authority to take a road dedication, it's only the Board of Trustees, which is why we're going through the Board of Trustees minutes to find out if there was, it doesn't look like around that time there was a corresponding promise to take it over, but we're still looking to see if there was, is to take a road for the village, that we had, a previous Board of Trustees board had accepted it. So we're looking to see if there's a similar acceptance, not from the planning board, but from the actual Board of Trustees themselves. Unfortunately, we haven't found that yet, but we're going to continue to double check.
So it would have to be around this date, one assumes?
It wouldn't have to be. It made sense, and we were talking, maybe we could find something one way or the other, but I don't think, we weren't able to find something one way or the other yet.
Is this...
Yeah, my impression was that, you know, at my closing, someone mentioned I should look up the historical piece of it. I think there was someone there who originally built a house on it and, you know, lived there for 30 years, the house I'm in. And the first house was built, and then the other lot stayed vacant for a little bit, and then, you know, the rest of the circle was completed, but the road was never dedicated. It doesn't really have a name, it doesn't have a sign, you know, people get lost coming down there all the time. You know, according to the planning board, the street went through back and forth on how to design it and how to make it look like Ardsley Avenue. Our mailing address is Ardsley Avenue West. It was, you know, from our perspective, it was designed to fit in and be part of that same roadway.
And everything, I mean, to our understanding, is up to code, and, you know, the trucks can fit through, we've had, you know, a fire truck unfortunately has had to come through, ambulance has been able to fit through, a full-size bus can fit through, so it's not a cul-de-sac that's, you know, tight and people can't move. I know there's certain, you know, there's certain measurements and dimensions that it has to be, but we've been told that it's all up to code in that sense.
Okay.
Can I just ask you where exactly you are, because I walk my dog down that street all the time.
Sure. So as you go down Ardsley...
Just down the street from my house.
Right, right. Right after you, that's a good landmark, right? So right after there, as you're going down Ardsley Avenue West, as you're heading west towards the train station, there is a sign on the right that says Hidden Roadway. It's a yellow try, you know, a diamond sign, and then we're right off of it, but we are Ardsley Avenue West.
Okay, so past Ubudon Road.
Right, and then it's the next right, so...
Hidden Roadway would be a cool name for the road.
Call it Hidden Roadway.
So, I mean, we just really wanted to be here tonight to emphasize how much we really would love, you know, and really want to be part of the village in terms of our street, because we just think it's really important.
Okay.
We are willing to, you know, whatever it is that we need to, we, you know, Ron has really worked hard to find this documentation, but...
Yeah, we opted not, you know, it was recommended to me to get a lawyer, I opted not to go that route, because, you know, I felt like if I could find the stuff here, and we could preserve our information here, you guys would be able to figure it out.
Okay, so what we both look for, Larry's going to look for it as well, but if you guys want me to look through some of the old Board of Trustees minutes, I think they're all up, Larry, they go back, I think, to 18, whatever, '72. So those were much shorter meetings back then, by the way. But, yeah, so we're going to look again. If we didn't find it, I kind of like looking right around that date, but we have to kind of do a further look.
You know, three documents, I guess they're all planning board meetings, is that what you're saying?
I think so, yeah.
And, you know, even the one where it says it's been approved, you know, it all says with the intention to dedicate the roadway. Every one of them, all the way...
There's no, yeah, there's no hard and fast rule about this. I think that we just want to make sure the trustees have the entire picture of what happened back in the 80s and early 90s.
Yep.
And once they have that picture, really, it's their choice to accept or not to accept. So, I mean, that's really where we are right now, we're still trying to find the full picture of it, because we do see the planning board side of it, but we don't see the other side of it, where there was any sort of mention by the Village Board that they were willing to accept. You know what I mean?
I can give you a little bit of history on that, Larry, because I was on the board right around that time. And also, it did come to the board at one point, and the board tabled it because there was an ongoing dispute about the zoning, whether or not you should have three or...
Bridges.
There's supposed to be two houses in there. And so in light of the dispute, they didn't want to jump the gun and dedicate the street. I think once those issues were resolved.
So that's all, it's not, it's not a, if this happens, then that happens, they just need to have the full picture, that's all, and then it's up to them.
Does it need to be stipulated somewhere there, or is it still up for discussion?
Like, what if for the sake of argument, you can't find the documentation, just curiously?
The whole decision is still theirs to make. I just feel that they should have the whole picture before they make that decision, so that's what we're trying to get to them.
Yeah, and again, there's a number of things that were changed to make that road kind of fit with the intention of dedicating, where they removed, you know, the cul-de-sac was designed with brass in the middle rather than all concrete to keep the landscape, you know, they did a number of things.
There's notes that there was a driveway that had to be moved, and there's documentation that it was, just all of these, so...
Marion, you have the same sheets, or Larry, you have the same one that he...
I have two, I have two additional ones.
There's additional ones that we found as well.
I've seen, well, because I did my own search, and what's critical is what Brian said, is the planning board can say whatever it wants to about the road being acceptable for dedication, being the right size, meeting the standards for dedication, but they have no say whether the road is dedicated or not. What roads you decide to accept, what roads you decide to demap are entirely Board of Trustees decision.
Yeah, and I apologize, I moved in in 2010 with my family to be a part of the village, and the reason it hasn't come up sooner is because I didn't have permanent neighbors, even though there's only three houses. She bought the house last year that someone who was living in Egypt owned, and I had no communication. I needed all the signatures to be able to come in to you guys to do this, and then the other house, the third house, a year, year and a half. So we now have everyone to represent the street and be able to do that.
Very good. Excellent.
Thank you.
Yes, hopefully we'll finish our, we'll just have the whole story, and then we can decide what we want to do.
Could I ask just one question? It's not that important, maybe, but you talked about, is the sign that shows where your street actually is, is there a reason that because it's not an actual village street that you can't have a proper road sign that says the name of it?
Well, we have some signs out there, but we don't have a village sign, I mean...
We don't have, right, it's just Ardsley Avenue West, that's our address. All of our addresses are Ardsley Avenue West.
But if you call the village, they say Padwee, which doesn't really exist on anything except for village maps.
Right.
But what kind of, to answer your question, there are private roads all over the village, and they have, they have street signs.
They have right signs, yeah.
Oh, right, we're not a, right, we're not, it's not one of the streets, that's a private street, like, we don't have our own separate sign. We go, we use...
We don't, we don't have a street name, call it whatever.
We have to use Ardsley Avenue West.
We go by Ardsley Avenue West.
But there is no street sign that says Padwee Lane or anything.
No, no.
Would that be, I mean, even if...
They have a little driveway.
Tomorrow, they could...
Private driveway.
Tomorrow, they could make up a name, and we'd inform, and we'd inform the post office, and you can erect a sign, and they'll deliver mail to the right place.
All other public village municipalities, I mean, with the recycling, the garbage, all of that, so it's all...
That's like any private road, though. I mean, that's, we have, as one of the trustees said, that is a lot like many roads in the village.
So, okay, so they could have...
But they're allowed to have street names.
They could have a street name and a street sign regardless of what we might or not know.
Field Point's another example, if the main road in Field Point is public, all of the side roads are private, but they all have names and addresses.
And what is the, what is the meaning of that in practice?
There's a sign that...
That it's not just a sign, so if it becomes a village road, what's...
Oh, if it becomes a village road, then we maintain it.
Okay.
So we plow it, and we fix it, and that's really the only major difference.
So private road, you still get sanitation, service, and all that stuff?
Right now, our kids have to walk, you know...
No, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know about school policy as far as what roads they're allowed to go on and not go on, I don't know if they, roads, I couldn't, I couldn't say for sure, but...
Barney, Barney.
But I don't know, all I'm saying is I don't know that if it becomes a public road, whether that all of a sudden will be part of the school bus route, I can't say that for the school.
Is there a timeline for this? I mean, you're going to decide that the research is done sufficiently?
I'm basically done with it, but you don't have it yet.
All right, that's good, because it'd be nice to get an answer and not drag it on too long.
Thank you.
Agreed. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
And public comment. I think I've lost control of the meeting.
I'm all for it. Hey, thank you.
You got the press on your side. Consent agenda. Oh, actually, I'm sorry, there was actually another letter that we received today that didn't make it in time for our official correspondence, but it was basically about what's going on with Brightview, where are we? So I don't know if you want to kind of give a quick summary of where we are and how the process would move forward if it does move forward.
Yeah, I think the question was...
Because it's basically, you know, when is public input? Do they miss the chance for public input?
Absolutely, no, no. Brightview's appearance before the Board of Trustees on March 7th was just to find out whether the board found the physical size of the facility acceptable before they embark on the very expansive and very involved process of preparing an EIS. Now, the reason they would have done that, it was clear to them from the board's comments on the DEIS, that the board found the size of it too big. In fact, the opening, the opening paragraph, or the first comment in the memo, in the Board of Trustees memo after the DEIS hearing, was that the comments below are directed at particular items in the DEIS, but the Board of Trustees would first like to make the overall comment that the building as currently proposed is too large. There is not unanimity among the board members as to how much it needs to be reduced in size to be acceptable. The name on board, however, rollicly, and the following items related to the bulk. One, the width of the building, parallel to Broadway, is too great. Two, additional height should not be permitted for the mechanicals on the roof. And three, the new building is proposed to be too close to the two existing stone buildings out in northern area under the site. Now, having part of that, it did not make sense from their perspective to go forward with all of the other things they're going to have to examine in the EIS, like further analyses of drainage, traffic impacts, lighting, impacts on municipal services. Didn't make sense to study all those if the project was not going to... When it came back. So they asked the board if they could come back to a work session with a trimmed-down proposal, which is what they did on March 7th. And so that facility was reduced from 165,000 square feet to 100,000 square feet. The width of it was narrow to the width of what the current building is, there's a big extension out of the back, but the hearing the board, they knew there was concern about the expansion on Broadway, and they reduced the number of rooms from 150 to 116, pretty much.
And the mix of...
No, moved away from it.
The mix with no independent...
Right, and they eliminated the independent living altogether. So my guess is that they thought the Board of Trustees would find it acceptable, and then they would go on and study all the other stuff they have to study in the FBI. At the March 7th meeting, though, I think it was clear to them that a majority of the board was still not comfortable with the project, with the bulk of it, and they could have just walked away at that point, I think some people thought they might, but my understanding is that they're going to come back one more time to the board at the, was it the April 18th meeting? Yeah, with the differently configured facility. If they make their submission prior to the meeting, then that, the pictures, whatever, will be posted with the agenda, like all other agenda items, it depends on when they submit it. And then if the board found that acceptable, then they would go on and prepare their FEI, the draft final environmental impact, respond to the many questions raised by the board, raised in the letters from the public, and raised by our consultants, questions about height, the amount of excavation and the truck trips, how emergency cases would be handled, the need for the, for the, the need for the facility and removal, protection of trees, traffic, lighting, all those issues would be studied. Now, and there will be opportunity for further public participation. Although the secret rules don't require that there be a public hearing on the FEIS, I'm going to recommend that this board hold the hearing before it accepts the, after the public hearing, before he accepts the final environmental impact statement. That was a procedure that the planning board followed, tenuum project. Again, even though secret didn't require it, I'm sure this, I'll recommend this board, I'm sure this board will want to do it, so there'll be that opportunity for public hearing, once they come back in with all the answers to the questions that were raised on the DEIS. Additionally, there will have to be a public hearing before the board finally adopts the zoning amount, and if it decides, I mean, then they end up, the FEIS, you're compelled to make negative findings, and then, you know, that might kill it, but when you make a vote on the final project, there'll be another public hearing on that as well. So there's a lot of opportunity for public comment, and the only, there was one question that they asked the board on March 7th, is do you find the config... And if they come back, I guess this is going to be the same thing. So there's, all those, all the questions that were raised by the public have to be addressed in the final environmental impact statement, and there will be a hearing on that as well. addressed in the final environmental impact statement, and there will be a hearing on that.
Exactly, and I think that's what we tried to convey that night, that it wasn't another public hearing, because we were looking at one item, which was just, you know, it was basically, the project was over, because we said it was too big, they came back with revised project and wanted our opinion on that, not on ambulance corps, not on traffic, and not on, and all those other things we had talked about previously that still aren't resolved, but it was, that wasn't the night for that, and I think that's what led to the confusion. And, of course, we'd all agreed to as much public comment as, you know, from the scoping session on, we've had public hearing, and the project this size and scope, we'd, of course, want as much public input as possible.
Yeah, so, so those questions that were raised will be raised, well, well, they'll be addressed in the draft final environmental. Comments, say, listen, we asked this question, this is really not getting to the heart of it, or you're ignoring this, you're ignoring that, you know, and you're not going to give just one document, I guarantee you, the draft, FBI, yes, revised, it's the board's document, and if, and if, they'll keep revising it to make it acceptable to you, if at some point it's, it's not getting there, then you'll just take it over and write it yourself.
Yeah, man, this is off course, assuming that they want to move forward with the project.
This was my.
Right, right, exactly, because the point is, we step to them, hey, listen, you guys, the most important thing here, I mean, was holding, you could hold this whole thing up as the size, so they need to, they need to resolve it. And that doesn't mean, let's say, at the April meeting, they come back with a proposal that all five of you can say, yeah, that looks fine, we don't have any issue with that size. That does not mean that they don't, that only means that you think the size is vandalized, the impacts of all the truck traffic that's being involved in the removal of soil, or, you know, the impacts that it may have on, on traffic, or the other impacts.
Higher.
Right, that the impacts that it has on the park, with the ambulance corps.
Thank you for that, I think that makes it very clear. We'll give you no chance for public comment, but you're back to that, keep going back to it. If not, we'll move on to the consent agendas. If anyone has any questions to comment on the consent agenda, otherwise I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, if I can get a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing to consider a local law amending the zoning code to provide for the expiration of limited site development plan approval and to correct the notice provision of section 2498. I will make a motion to open that public hearing, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
To this amendment, one is, there is a provision in the code that if you get site plan approval, that it expires if you don't get a certificate of occupancy within three You can also, there's a limited site development plan approval, it doesn't come up too much, it usually comes up when there's a big subdivision or a subdivision, and then in doing the subdivision, they give limited site development plan approval to the individual lots, it's not a subfinal. Anyway, there's no, those, that doesn't, right now, under the code, limited site plan development approval doesn't expire. So this would add a provision that it would expire three years after the date of the approval unless a building permit has been obtained. So that you don't have somebody coming back 10 years later and the board can't review it because it already. The other, the other change is really just a correction, the, it's, it's a provision for notifying property owners of any variance, but it doesn't say which property owners, even though it's always been understood that this property owner is within 200 feet of the subject property. That appears in other parts of the code for some reason, I might guess it was just a typographical error, it isn't in this section, so it would just be within 200 feet of the subject property.
Any questions or comments on this? It's about as straightforward legislation as we've ever had before us.
That's too country.
Yeah. If anyone can hear us, we need this public comment.
I know.
No comment?
Seems, no, it seems straightforward, I'm always, you know, I can't about these things and think, am I missing something that I can't say that I am, so.
There's nothing to miss.
There's nothing to miss, okay.
Have we ever had a problem with this? With the.
Now with the notice thing, with the, with the three years, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, not exactly, but if you remember the.
It was 30 years.
About 30 years later.
Thirty-year-old approval, and we ended up in a lot of excessive litigation over, which we won eventually, although that, yeah, and it, it's come up a couple of times.
Resolved to adopt the local law, oh, I'm sorry, I will close the public hearing, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, resolved to adopt the local law amending the zoning code to provide for the expiration of limited site development plan approval and to correct the notice, notice provision of section 22498. Would someone like to make a motion?
Someone.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? I don't want to take everything tonight, moving too quickly. This one I wouldn't give up, though. Award of a contract for a wood.
They make a movie about that? They have a movie about a woodchipper.
But actually, there is a wrinkle, isn't there?
Yeah, just a small one.
It's not as straightforward as it appears.
It's a wedge, not a, not a.
Of the bids we received, the, we are not recommending awarding to the low bid, the low bid was actually pretty significantly lower than the rest of the bids, but it was not responsive to the specifications that we put out there, it's frankly not, it's not what we wanted.
Different woodchipper.
Didn't do the job the way we expect, so we are recommending an award of the contract to the second low bidder, Vermeer North Atlantic Sales, $19,980.
Yeah.
This is a previously budgeted capital project.
How big of a chip are we talking about? I mean, how, do you know how big, what kind of, that's what I'm asking.
Not off the top of my head, no. I'm sorry, it's all specifications.
How big of a chip?
You guys make a pretty big woodchipper, though.
My question is, how far afield do we put out these bids, because the first bid came from North Carolina?
Yeah, they're advertising in a newspaper and, and on the website.
Okay, so, okay, so anybody can just.
Yeah.
Get on their.
Yeah, they usually have services that pick off the announcements and provide them to their clients.
So they're, obviously, they're not paying, they're not providing maintenance for it?
No, that wasn't part of the bid, so.
Whereas sealed bids were received and opened on March 9th, 2016, at 11:00 AM in Village Hall as follows. Altech Environmental Products, $13,500, Vermeer North Atlantic Sales and Service, $19,980, Argento and Sun, $90,998, Austin Longmore, $20,770, Big Valley Nursery, Inc., $20,900, Arrowway Tractor, $21,313.99, Reg, Reg Garage, $23,778, Aldo Ray and Associates Corporation, $32,493.75. Whereas the village administrator reviewed the bids submitted and determined that responsive to the specification, and whereas the village administrator determined that the bid from the second lowest bidder is in order and responsive to the specifications, now therefore be resolved that the bid from Altech Environmental Products is hereby rejected, and further resolved that the clerk treasurer is authorized to issue a purchase order for the purchase of a woodchipper in the amount of $19,980 from Vermeer North Atlantic Sales and Service. I will make the motion, can I have a second?
Question. There was a 15, was that, did I hear this correct, like 15 dollar difference between them and Argento, or did I miss here the numbers?
It's about that, yeah.
So, the question I have is, we're not paying for shipping to this thing, right?
Uh, no, I believe it was, it was included in the specs, yes.
Because I'm thinking, you know, there might be some benefits to having a local.
Brewster versus White Plains.
Hmm.
Brewster?
Yeah, the North Carolina one was rejected.
Oh, 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 well, then, I'll shut up.
That's Brewster.
Brewster's close enough. I was thinking.
I think I should read the entire thing again, so you don't have to.
Brian, you don't have to.
That would be nice.
I will make a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hope the rec department has long service for their woodchipper. Authorization to approve change orders number one and number two for the Irvington LED Streetlight Project 2015-02.
So there, as you said, there are two proposed change orders, both going in opposite directions. Is a, is a credit in the amount of $10,586.45, and that is as a result of alternate fixtures being available from the, from the manufacturer, which have the same specifications as what was originally bid several years ago, but a lower price. So those fixtures were substituted, we got the same performance for a lesser price. The result of that over the entire contract is a credit of $10,586.45. The second item is a change order in the other direction, in the amount of $36,837.15, and it is for the installation of so-called decorative fixtures, so the, the lights that were replaced were the typical Cobra head fixtures that you see almost throughout the village. There are a couple of developments in town that have pole-mounted, I mean, not the typical Cobra head fixtures, they have pole-top fixtures, like a, what we call a shoebox fixture, which is probably a circa 1980-type, style, type piece of equipment. And then there's also a more typical, more typical pole-top fixture, so.
Those fixtures are actually.
They're more expensive than the Cobra heads, and so the change order is a, is a result of that. But, again, we, we have pretty fast payout on the Cobra, so we're still recommending to change these decoratives to LED.
So, I, I realized after asking a question about this, that these different ones are in neighborhoods that have this look already, it's not to change any look of a fixture differently, so.
Those pictures are, are actually from Google Street View that, of what's up there.
One type is, and you were saying, this is Sycamore and Dogwood area, and then this is Field Point.
Right.
So they're getting the same thing they always had, I think they're getting LED instead of.
Right.
So you need the nuance in order to accommodate the LED bulbs?
Yeah, you can't just.
Yes.
Put the old top.
Yeah, it's not, it, it's not the entire, it's not just the bulb that gets replaced, like you might do at your house, it's, there's an entire housing that needs to be replaced, and in the shoebox and the regular pole tops, it's, you're replacing the entire, the entire piece.
Okay, but ultimately, the, the savings from the LED lighting will weigh, outweigh this cost.
Correct.
So it'll just take a little longer because these are a little more expensive.
Yeah, exactly.
But, so the neighborhoods are getting exactly what they always had.
And to put this all in perspective, the, the current contract prior to this, these two change orders was about $238,000. The original budget that we're working with, that the village board had the $450,000, so we're over $100,000 under budget. So what we said ahead of time is, we really would like to get the decoratives done as well, we're also looking in our parks to try to see which ones we can replace there without changing the look, but at least change the LED, so we're, we're working to do this as completely as possible.
So does that mean, I might be working on department or inference now, does that mean that all of the problem swap outs have been taken care of, or is that.
No.
Optimistic?
That's optimistic. There are some problems around the village that have to be taken care of, and some problems are on the contractor's side, or some are on Con Edison's side, so it's, it's a combination.
So there may be more expense beyond or not for those?
It, it, it depends on what problem it is. If it's a Con Ed problem, no, there's no extra expense, we just have to wait until Con Ed addresses it. If it's a contractor problem, there's no expense. The only issue is if there's something, if one of the arms was damaged in a particular location, we'd have to replace the arm, and then the contractor can replace the head, so they're very limited cases.
The electronics swap out of the head also included the light sensor.
Yes.
So if we're noticing some issues with the light sensors, should we contact Greg about that?
Yeah, absolutely, and we're the police department, just report, report the pole number.
Right, that means I have to stop the car and figure out the pole number, but there's one I drive by every day that seems to be very flaky as to when it decides to turn on.
You can tell me? We opted, we opted for the, for the heavy-duty solar sensors, so we should get a pretty good amount of life out of it, on the basis that we, we didn't, we didn't want a nice brand-new LED to be compromised by a faulty solar sensor, so.
All right.
Any other questions? Resolved to approve credit change order number one, in the amount of $10,586.45 for the Cobra head lighting installed in the village of Irvington, and further resolved to approve change order number two, in the amount of $36,837.15 for the decorative lighting installed as part of the LED streetlight project, authorized the village administrator execute said change orders. I'll make a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
So when was it? Then that's about 20-something? Isn't that different?
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there'll probably be another change order coming relating to the total quantity of lights replaced, so, but that's for another day.
Okay.
Reports of boards, standing committees and officers, trustee ladies and reports. Trustee Gill, then?
I'm just trying to think what's up, the boards have been operating pretty much normally, I guess it's the, no special reports, but the request from the boards to, for people to consider taking a position on the board, volunteering. The boards I'm involved with are the Environmental Conservation Board, the Tree Commission.
I can send you a Tree Commission resume right now.
And, I'm trying to think of whatever, I'm not, I mean, the boards that are looking for, actively looking for more folks, I'm sure I'm leaving at least one out. And the Traffic Calming Committee is always interested in having people drop by, in fact, the meeting is usually on alternate Thursdays during the day. So you could contact me or contact slowdownirvington@gmail.com and figure out what day and time and place that meeting takes place, if you want to come in and participate in that. And that's that.
Tree Commission's you, or should I send it to Michael, or does Matt?
You can copy both of us, or if you don't have Michael's, then.
I'm sure I have it on my phone.
I'll forward it to Michael.
Perfect.
Okay, so Rec and Parks Department, the Dogs on Leash Program in Matheson Park is in its third week, that runs through April 28th on Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, and Sunday, from 7:15 to 10:00 AM in Matheson Park. You have to, your dog has to be licensed with the town of Greenberg and then registered with our Rec Department, so you can contact Joe for information on that. Please save the date for the Face Committee's Spring Fest in Matheson Park, so it's pretty much an all-day festival on Saturday, Saturday, May 14th from 2:00 to 8:00. Music, local bands, entertainment, games, contests, potential of a zipline, food, beer, wine, activities for children. So, Saturday, May 14th, Spring Fest in Irvington. The bathrooms in Memorial, Matheson, and Seneca Hudson Parks are now open. Application forms for counselors and staff for the 2016 Irvington Summer Day Camp are now available, Maureen DePauli has information on that. The Irvington Woods Committee has announced a community day at the O'Hara Nature Center on Saturday, May 7th, from 1:00 to 3:30 PM. Many great activities will be included, so stay tuned for more information. The Irvington Woods Committee is also holding its next meeting on Wednesday, April 6th, at 7:00 PM in the O'Hara Nature Center. That committee is actually looking for individuals or groups that are willing to adopt and care for any of the 10 designated gardens located on the grounds there. Teenscape Summer Travel Camp 2016 is ongoing, registration for, for Teenscape is ongoing, Angela Shaw has information on that. We have 34 adult softball teams this year participating in our three leagues, that starts in early April. Had in over 10 years. And that's it? That's it? Oh, and I did reach out to Chief DePauli about the fire department, haven't heard back, so I don't really have anything to report, to report from them.
I've got one more for you.
Yes?
The aqueduct cleanup.
Oh, pub day?
Picking up poop.
Pub day. I don't remember, remember offhand? Is it the 16th of April?
It's, I will get it in one second.
They had, they reminded me of here, they had some great graphics for that.
It was a very cute graphic.
In a hazmat suit?
Yeah. I'm not in a hazmat suit.
Wait a minute, there's a picture.
Hazmat, sorry, that's right.
Right, I don't use that for dogs.
Oh, it's on the village website, right?
It is, yeah. It is, yeah, I noticed.
Oh, I got two different emails for him, sorry.
It is, April sixteenth at ten AM.
All right.
At the Agcuck behind the Main Street School.
And they're going to supply everything you need, gloves, bags, disinfectants?
Yes.
Disponable gloves and Purell.
Bring your, bring your own dog, then.
And dogs are welcome.
Dogs are welcome.
On leash.
And will be cleaned up after prompting.
Yeah.
Can I agree?
Okay, yes, so I'll, I'll, theme here. In my, in my work to set up the, the festival in June, as opposed to the festival that you're talking about, that's the Celebrate Irvington Festival in June, June nineteenth, Father's Day. Besides the other things that we've done on that day, we now have a, a proposal to have a dog-friendly activity as part of that day somehow, on, what kind of, I don't know, if it's dogs, walk your dog at Main Street, or put a, I don't know, put an outfit on your dog. I don't know exactly what it's going to be, but it's weather permitting, developed, not by me. But that's besides the trolley and the, the stuff on, I've been, you know, trying to encourage the businesses on Main Street to get with the program and do some fun things. So we'll see what comes of that. The Historic District Committee is meeting on, on Wednesday, the twenty-third, and the, you know, the two things that they're, have in front of them are looking at a draft of a landmark, a local landmarks law, and also looking at a draft of the guidelines document that I believe actually came in today from Steve Tilly. So they'll be able to start reviewing the work that the consultant has done on that. Also reached, the theater, nothing this weekend, but there's some cool stuff coming up the next weekend, we'll get that in a second. But I've also reached out and, and, you know, the Housing Committee, that Janice has worked on, and Christina worked on before, that's, that, that committee is still critically important, and I am the liaison to it, so, share of that committee, I'm encouraging Rose Noonan and Stephanie Cezula to help us again to organize that, and I, I guess what we could say is, that committee could use some more interested members from the community. They could contact me or contact Larry, and he'll forward it to me, and we'll be finding some date before too long to have another meeting. A lot of good has come out of that, but Janice, God, liked it here, so she's stopping too. So here she sits, and now we have no. Okay, so the other thing, go ahead, and I'm going to find the theater. So if you have something, Janice, go ahead and start.
Green Policy Task Force, speaking about groups that could use more members, it certainly could. Petra Candace, who had been chairing it, was instrumental in getting the microgrid feasibility study completed. She is now leaving the committee, and this is a really exciting time to be involved with this app. Move on to the next step with that, and they also have a whole big agenda of green issues that they would like to see move forward in the village. Highway Department activities, you may not have noticed it, but there were thirteen snow events this winter. The last one, no accumulation, being on Sunday over to Monday, but the Highway Department has been maintaining winter equipment, cleaned up the horseshoe parking lot and the parking lot at the Art C Train Station, filled potholes with pothole killer, assisted the Parks Department with hauling of organic debris from Sena Hudson, and began work on the rain gardens at the nature center, and they've also been cleaning up the catch basin tops.
Okay. So, the Peiser family that we all know well, Penny Peiser has, is going to be screening a film that she directed, and that's going to be shown April eighth in the theater. Lot of interest in, in her work, I understand it's very provocative, and there'll be a discussion. And then also that weekend, on that Sunday, that's the last of the afternoon cabarets, and that's a, that's a great, it's, you know, attracted a small crowd, but it's, it's a really professional performer, singers, right here with a beautiful piano that's in the Town Hall Theater, so both of those things are coming up that weekend, the eighth and the tenth. That's all I got. Next.
Mary Ann, go. Do you keep going, go ahead?
I'll do, I don't have a report.
Larry?
Just, just a brief update on the construction renovation of this building, which I'm sure people have noticed, is not getting a lot of, not a lot of progress happening. We are currently locked in a dispute with the contractor. We've been working very closely, had meetings recently, working very closely with our consultants to do the best we can to protect our interests. You know, there's a lot of issues that we're trying to work through, and to get the project done and done on time, the on-time part, I'm not sure we're going to be able to hit, but we're trying to get it done, so it's, that's where we are.
Good news to follow on that one. The village clerk treasurer's in Florida, somewhere at work tonight. We're already, the village attorney already waited for, public comment again, or back to you guys?
You stayed for the whole time.
Burning issues?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Or we have something else.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, we have our trusty village attorney. We forget things.
Turn me off by talking about Town Hall. You were emailed a resolution with some text on... I have one here.
Yeah.
Related to, never any...
Okay, so it's not... Nothing new than what you dealt with probably a few meetings ago, which is a, there was an assembly bill that you approved a home rule request for, and there, at the time, there was no corresponding Senate bill, there's now a Senate bill, and you're being asked to approve a request for a home rule, a home rule request for that legislation, again, relating to the, to the proposed hotel tax within the town of Greenberg, its villages, and the village of Sleepy Hollow as well. Recognizing that there are no hotels in Irvington, but we're being supportive of our sister villages.
So as that, the bill came up and passed, and there was, eventually there was a veto of this bill by the governor.
That was last session, yeah.
Right, so now this process will start again?
Yes.
An assembly bill and a Senate bill, and that would allow tax, taxing of hotels in the town of Greenberg.
Town of Greenberg, its villages, and the village of Sleepy Hollow.
Resolved to approve home rule request for Senate Bill S. sixty-eight seventy-two, entitled "An Act to Amend the Tax Law in Relation to Authorize the Town of Greenberg to Adopt a Local Law to Impose a Hotel Motel Occupancy Tax for Hotels Not Located in a Village, Authorizing Specified Villages and the Towns of Greenberg and Mount Pleasant to Adopt Local Laws to Impose a Hotel Motel Occupancy Tax in Such Villages, and Providing for the Repeals of Such Provisions Upon Expiration There," I'll make the motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mary.
Well, that's a rough mouthful.
It's a good title, but we'll need to, we need to, some kind of like, uh, important version of that.
By the way, thank you, Larry, the new speed radar detection sign is up in front of Village Hall, it's solar-powered, so that's yippy, and so as you're driving down Main Street now, down the hill, it will tell you that whether or not you're speeding.
It's hard not to notice that it's great.
Yeah, it looks good, and I think we have a second one that we ordered that's more, it's not solar, it's just totally battery-powered, so it's, it can be moved around, it's not on a cart, it can, it has a removable mount, and I think we're talking about putting it out on Harriman for a while, actually.
Does everyone know the speed limit on Main Street?
Twenty-five sounds high.
What is it?
I don't know, fifteen, I guess so.
Fifteen?
It's not twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
Fifteen is only at the school.
At the school, it's less.
Yeah, it's twenty, twenty-five.
Does it flash at you if you go over it?
I'm not sure how it's programmed.
It was like sixteen, so park.
I just don't want to get a ticket tested in.
You go twenty-six.
It's supposed, it's supposed to have a warning.
Yeah, I think it's large.
I also, just as, as aside, I, I ran into the Nancy Drew movie making, I guess it was Monday, on, on Main Street, there were, saw a bunch of little kids, and then I saw a bunch of trucks, and I thought, oh, yeah, that's that, one more movie, so.
No problems, you saw?
Yeah, what's that?
No problems?
Not that I saw.
Shooting.
No, no explosions.
Yeah, modern version of Nancy Drew.
Right.
We kept the explosions to a minimum.
All right.
Review of current action items? How did nothing came up?
We can make some up.
Yes, I have one. The width, the diameter of the chipper that it can take, the wood?
The action item is to get us the pad wheeling materials so that we can evaluate them.
Interested.
Motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.